Mr. Smith, I'm in favor. Okay. Okay, so we'll move to item six...
You missed the number.
Oh, sorry. I have to say it this time. We'll move to the number four, disclosure of particular interests in the general nature of our app. Who has the deputy vice mayor's appeal?
Thank you. I'm going to declare your interest for item six A and B as the... my employer is providing engineering, planning and land... no, not landscape, planning services and transportation services about craft homes.
Very good. So, uh, deputy mayor, we'll step aside for the Valcraft discussions. Okay. We're not being silent, everyone. We will move to six A through the public meeting. Um, so I have a motion that we... Open the meeting for the planned subdivision, Valcraft Homes, a zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, in the meeting, considering the Glenn Becker municipal joint, be opened at 6:26 PM. Moved by Councilman Lewis, seconded by Councilman Ward on the floor. Now that the public meeting is open, uh, just to thank all of our guests and speakers tonight, um, just brought to everybody there, as this is a public meeting, um, tonight is the time when you can step forward and, um, and provide feedback and write questions. Uh, we're required by the Planning Act advisor that if you do not make an oral presentation or written submission, uh, before the proposed bylaw amendments are adopted by municipal council, tonight you will not be entitled to appear to such a decision at the Ontario Land Tribunal. If you must make an oral application this evening, we ask that you rest your head. We'll step forward to the, to the table and you can speak at that time. I would now ask a consultant for planning, if you may, to give us an overview of the application at hand. Good evening, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor Brad. We see council and the public. So, tonight, uh, we're here to discuss a few different things. Um, number one being a subdivision application, um, that is a county application, as well as zoning bylaw amendment. Um, the SDG file, zero two SDS twenty twenty-three, um, is the file number for the subdivision application, and then Z twenty twenty-four zero-one is the zoning amendment application number. The applicant is Valecraft Homes Limited, and the landowner for the property in question is Stephen Murphy Drywall Limited. Um, the property is currently vacant in Iroquois, and you see the, the legal description, um, on your screen. Um, so I'll just quickly go through, um, how this meeting will proceed. So, it's an open forum for the public and council to gather information, ask questions, and voice comments or concerns. I'll go through a brief overview of the subdivision and rezoning process, um, and then followed by, uh, my... any comments by the applicant's representative. Um, following the presentation, there will be an opportunity for comments and questions from the public and council, and an opportunity for the applicant, um, or myself to respond. So, I think what's very clear is that no decision on either application will be made this evening. Um, so just to sort of go off of the broadside earlier, um, so all requests to be notified of the decisions of either the subdivision application or the zoning amendment can be submitted to the municipality of South Dundas, planner@selfdundas.com, or the United Counties' Director of Planning at planning@sdg.ca. This meeting is being held pursuant to section fifty-one and section thirty-four of the Planning Act. So, to go over the subdivision process for you, um, the United Counties of SD and G has the authority to approve or refuse the proposed plan of subdivision. Staff here will bring an action request, including proposed conditions, to a subsequent meeting. And then fol- following the public meeting and the forwarding of any municipal comments, the United Counties will review all submissions made by the public and agencies respecting the proposal before making a decision. If approved, conditions are then drafted to address development requirements, as well as items raised through public and agency consultation. Um, they typically include with the requirement to enter into a subdivision agreement with the municipality, um, and, uh, submission for approval of a stormwater management plan, among many others. Um, so members of the public do not have appeal rights with respect to the subdivision application. Now, with the zoning amendment, there is a twenty-day period of appeal, and that begins following the decision of the local municipal council. Um, so if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the municipality of South Dundas before the bylaw is passed, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council of the municipality of South Dundas to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the municipality of South Dundas before the bylaw is passed, the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal, unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So, I'll go through, um, sort of the planning framework. Um, so in Ontario, the provincial policy statement is the, is the statement, um, that of the government's policies on land use planning, and it applies province-wide and provides clear, uh, policy direction on land use planning, um, and I think the big part of that is that it promotes strong communities, a strong economy, and a clean and healthy environment. And that usually changes just after new, uh, uh, new governments, um, are, are, uh, in, in power. Um, so under the Planning Act, which is sort of the, the document that, uh, guides land use planning matters, um, a decision of municipality in respect of exercise of any authority that affects a planning matter shall be consistent with the policy statements issued. Um, so at the county level, um, the United Counties of SD and G, um, you have the official plan. And it outlines a set of goals and objectives, uh, for development in the county for the next twenty or so years, with having regard for the effects on the social, economic, and natural environment of the municipality. It contains policies to be used for the review of development applications and any other planning decisions. So essentially what it does is it takes the provincial policies and makes it a little bit more, um, gives it a little bit more of a localized context. Um, so then what you often hear about, um, at the municipal level is the zoning bylaw. And it controls the use of a land in a municipality, in a municipality or community by designating land parcels with specific land zones. Um, so the bylaw specifies permitted uses, um, required standards, um, so those can look like different commercial or residential uses, um, and then required standards can be something like parking requirements, building size, lot coverage, that sort of thing. The zoning bylaws and any amendments to the zoning bylaw must conform to the official plan. Um, the Planning Act says, uh, in section twenty-four one, "Despite any other general or special act where an official plan is in effect, no public work shall be undertaken and except as provided in subsections two and four, no bylaw shall be passed for any purpose that does not conform." So, just sort of moving on to, uh, the applications, and I just want to make a point that the reason that we often, um, bring both the zoning and the subdivision meeting together is because one often goes in hand-in-hand with the other. Um, so, uh, this property, um, this is the location of the subject property, and it's just north of County Road Two in Iroquois. Um, so notice at the public meeting was sent to all owners, all owners of land within a hundred and twenty meters of the subject land via first-class mail. Notices were also posted, um, on a sign at the property, and notice was also given electronically and to the prescribed list, um, established under the Planning Act for both the subdivision and zoning. So, this is a copy of the proposed subdivision, and I know, uh, Frank has given, handed out a few copies as well. Um, this is the actual draft, proposed draft plan, uh, that was submitted with the application. Um, and on this slide, we've got the official plan designation, so what you're seeing is, um, it is located within the urban settlement area of Iroquois, and the pink color is, uh, the residential district. The orange color is sort of to the south, along County Road Two that you're seeing is the commercial district. And then this is the current, um, outline of the zoning bylaw for this area. So, as part of the subdivision process, um, we did hold a formal pre-consultation and invited all of the commenting agencies to attend. Um, as part of that pre-consultation, we established a list of complete application requirements. Um, so with, uh, with the application, um, the proponent also included the proposed draft plan, um, a phase-one environmental site assessment, or an ESA, a planning rationale, um, a traffic impact study, um, and I just sort of have noted on there that it did, uh, highlight signaled pedestrian crossing would, would be, um, would improve pedestrian, uh, the pedestrian network, and then also a conceptual servicing report, and that talked about water and wastewater, as well as stormwater. So, that plan that you have in front of you, um, the number of, the total number of residential units it's proposed to bring is two-hundred-and-ninety-nine, so that it makes up fifty-eight lots, um, for fifty-eight single-detached dwellings, um, twelve lots representing twenty-four semi-detached units, nineteen lots representing a hundred-and-five townhouse units, or road, road dwellings, one block representing a hundred-and-twelve apartment units, one block representing one park, and two blocks representing two stormwater management ponds. So, that gives that two-hundred-and-ninety-nine residential unit total. Um, so just to sort of include the zoning amendment process as well, so, um, the purpose and effect of the zoning bylaw amendment is to rezone part of Lot One, Plan Fifty, Lot Six to fourteen, on Plan One Hundred, part of Lot Twenty on Plan One Hundred, and Lot Four to Five on Plan One Hundred and Eleven in the former geographic village of Iroquois. From residential first density, that's the R-one zone, residential first density, special exception one, that's the R-one-dash-one zone, residential fourth density, special exception two, that's the R-four-dash-two zone, and open space, two, residential third density, uh, special exception two, that's the R-three-dash-two zone, residential fourth density, that's special exception two, that's R-four-dash-two zone, and open space. So, the proposed amendment will increase the range permitted residential uses, um, as noted on the proposed draft plan, um, and, uh, and on the zoning amendment application, and it'll, will accommodate the proposed draft plan application. Okay. So, um, just to sort of go over what those zoning, uh, changes do, so, um, one, adjust the existing R-four-two zone to match the proposed apartment dwelling block. Um, so, sometimes when we're mapping out, um, the, uh, the zoning bylaw, um, the, isn't the parcel fabric is not, um, is not a legal survey, so sometimes there's a little bit of a discrepancy, so this is just, um, us two are looking to include that, uh, R-four-dash-two to match up with the proposed apartment block dwelling, or apartment dwelling block. Um, the, it also adjusts the existing open space zone to match through the proposed park block, which is the same sort of situation. Um, to rezone the two proposed stormwater blocks to the open space zone, and to rezone the remainder of the subject site to the R-three exception zone, which permits the proposed detached, semi-detached, and townhouse dwellings. Um, and they have, uh, they do have a few exceptions that are needed for their design. Um, so they're looking to reduce the minimum lot size for a single detached dwelling from four-hundred, or, sorry, to four-hundred meter squared, um, from four-hundred-and-fifty meters squared, to, uh, to suit the proposed smaller dwellings on smaller lots. Um, they needed to reduce the minimum lot, lot width for single detached dwellings, um, from fifty meters to twelve meters. As well, they needed to increase the lot coverage percentages for semi-detached and row dwellings, um, from thirty-five percent, increase it to forty-five percent, and then remove the group setback requirement for blocks of more than four row dwellings. Um, so, the Valecraft Homes row house blocks are well articulated, and their exterior walls achieve the intent of the provision of the group, uh, setback requirement without needing to offset units themselves, and I just have a few pictures on the next slide. Um, so instead of having a very flat facade of, um, multi- of more than four, um, the plans that, uh, Valecraft, uh, have, um, have a more articulated roof line, um, and you kind of see the difference, um, in what, uh, in what they're proposing. So, this is a map, uh, or a drawing of the proposed zoning amendment, um, as I kind of identified there, so, um, I don't think that's the same, it's not the same map that you have in front of you that Frank handed out, but that one also, uh, indicates your single semis and row houses. So, in terms of the subdivision design, um, the applicant is proposing municipal piped water and sanitary system, a twenty-meter road right-of-way, including some sidewalks, um, and then a stormwater design collection, um, to be consistent with the municipality's subdivision design guidelines. So, the detailed design that I think a lot of us think of actually comes, um, as part of the proposed draft conditions. So, in terms of agency comments that we've received to date, Enbridge, uh, they are requiring, uh, that the applicant provide necessary easements and submit detailed plans to, to Enbridge. Um, the MECP have no comments. Salvation Conservation Authority, if approved, recommended conditions included, uh, stormwater management plan, lot grading and drainage plan, a sediment and erosion control plan, and acknowledgement to obtain a permit for any interference with the water course. Um, and usually those, uh, are, are contained in, um, satisfactory language within the subdivision agreement at a later stage. Trans-Northern Pipeline also had no conditions. So, we, I, we have received a few, uh, landowner comments, um, and so I just wanted to include those in the presentation today as well. Um, so, a, a landowner, uh, indicated that the subdivision would cause water to drain across County Road Two to the south side of the ditch, which runs parallel to Beach Avenue, and that the ditch hasn't been draining properly for years, um, and this is evidenced by cattails and other vegetation, and the recent need for a sump pump. Uh, that landowner also, uh, indicated that the traffic wait times would increase from what is already, um, and that, uh, that could, uh, raise the possibility of increased collisions. Um, and the, their suggestion was to improve, uh, the lanes and allow for better flow and, and turning lanes to handle that flow. As well, a landowner at Twelve Billings Avenue West, uh, purchased their property in December twenty twenty, and mentioned that, um, that it was advertised as a corner lot, and it would, and they maybe wouldn't have purchased that lot otherwise. Um, and so because they were told it was a, a corner lot, um, that there were increased development restrictions because of the setback from an exterior side lot line, so on a corner lot, there, for, uh, turning purposes, um, and, uh, and, um, uh, line sight, um, uh, that oftentimes in zoning bylaws, there is an increased setback for exterior side yards. Um, and, and that is sort of it for my presentation. Um, the applicant is also here, uh, private with his team, to answer any questions.
Great, so thank you, uh, for being on the span. Appreciate the, uh, if we're listening, so we do have, uh, representatives from Valcraft Homes, we do have representatives from Mervantown, and of course, Miss Moore is here, and we cannot look it up to questions, whether from, uh, in the members of the public or the council team. And, uh, thanks, Councilor Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brad. So, the, the question I have was going, or asking about the, um, the reduced lot size for single detached homes, because it said that the, the homes that they plan to build were going to be smaller themselves, approximately, was, is that what you said, or?
Um, the, I think it was, so, the...
It was known for, it was known for a minimum of four-fifty down to four-hundred?
Yes.
Okay, so, it was, and did you say that that was because they planned on building just generally overall smaller homes, that, and so it would therefore be okay, or what, I can't remember if that's what you said there.
Uh, okay.
Slide twenty-two.
To suit the proposed smaller dwellings on smaller lots, so a lot of the, um, house designs that Valecraft builds are often two-story.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, they're two-story, so, so we basically have houses with one inch square footage for about nineteen hundred square feet up to just over three thousand square feet. So, depending on, you know, the, I guess, what they pick, we're, we're kind of estimating what we think we're going to sell. Um, and I would think the average house, single family home, would probably be around twenty-four, twenty-five hundred square feet. So, if that's the case, you still have a good yard, you just, we just, it's not wasted space, I guess.
And we also have two different series. We've got the eight-hundred series and the thousand series. Um, maybe if you show the colored map, uh, based on the location of the single home.
Yes.
We've got two different types of products, so larger homes.
Yes. And you can see that. So, just, you'll see in the blue is, is our larger homes. Is our larger homes, are they blue, and the, I guess those would be a little larger homes, we put on those.
Just kidding.
Sorry, sorry. Is it like that different?
Uh, yes, so basically, we have different series of homes, so what that does is it gives people different options with the semi-detached, or in the red, the yellow, or the townhomes, and the blue is all the different singles. So, the mix, I guess, between the eight-hundred and the thousand series, we call them, so. So, it gives people lots of different options, but we do have different square footages and the sizes.
So, I guess the reason why I was, just, I don't know why I was thinking, I was thinking it was going to be a bungalow. I just, so I was thinking one story, I wasn't thinking two stories, and that's just why I was wondering.
And we are selling bungalows too, so we have different, in those series of homes, we have smaller bungalows and larger bungalows. And we also have that in semi-detached, we also have two-story semi-detached, and we have bungalow semi-detached.
That's what I'm looking at, but the plan is the mix, right? Like, the apartment needs, the smaller bungalows, larger bungalows, but mix is super important, uh, that we mapped, and the feedback we've gotten from, uh, potential, uh, new residents coming to Iroquois, and through the survey with Ross Video, which, it was, uh, which is now in support of, so.
And I'll just share some information with you, just, just right now, in the apartments, we've got, um, we probably have a waiting list of already twenty-four people that want to rent the apartments. So, you can see there's a demand for people that, you know, maybe you want to start at homes now and want to move into an apartment, or people that just want to move into an apartment, be closer, maybe if they're working in Ross Video, or wherever they're working, but just, you can see there's that shortage, and of course, we hear it in the news now, the shortage of housing everywhere, so, um, but I was quite surprised that we had that many people calling us already for rentals. I was shocked, so, it's good.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just looking at, because we just handed out there, I just, briefly, is this parking lot, uh, in the apartment zone?
Yes.
Is that for all of the apartment buildings?
Yeah, there's all the gray, you'll see, there's actually parking in front of the buildings too, it just doesn't show it on there, we kind of color put, so there's parking in front of all those buildings, and then there's parking on the other side, additional, because of course you have to have visitor parking, and you have to meet those zoning requirements for, for parking.
That's what we're doing, uh, rapidity, uh, vehicles are, I don't know about the transportation, Councilman Ward.
Uh, my other question is, are any of these apartments to be, like, senior-oriented, or are they all, like?
They're, they're going to have elevators.
Okay, perfect.
And each of the buildings will probably have one unit that will be for handicapped, so, that, uh, we're looking at that now, to be honest with you, we're just pricing out, we're looking at elevators, and we're looking at all that, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Barrier-free, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Brad. So, another question, um, they are going to be apartment buildings, they're not going to be condos, they're not going to be for sale, they're going to be for rents.
They're not going to be for sale.
Okay, so, who is, who is the owner going to be?
As of right now, we're going to, we're going to keep them.
So, it would be Valcraft.
It would be Valcraft, okay.
So, I, I also had a question for our fire chief, if that was, if, if we got...
Sure.
How, how many floors are these buildings?
They're going to be, it's going to be basically four levels, but the first level will go down a little bit, and then...
So, it's three and a half?
Yeah.
So, the, the question I had was, we already have one building here in Morseburg that we should maybe have a ladder truck for, but we can kind of get away with it with shared services agreements with other municipalities. If we add several more of these types of buildings, how, how much longer can we keep getting away before we have to buy a ladder truck?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that's something that we can look at through our fire master plan as being, uh, started this year.
Just to be fair, please.
Just, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that's something that can be looked at through our fire master plan with the consultants, and, uh, what our future development and needs are, uh, for the municipality and this fire service.
Miss Moore.
I also just wanted to add, too, that, um, the apartment block would be subject to site plan approval, and we would be going through this exercise with the fire chief and the building official, as we sort of explore, um, the design that, that's proposed, um, because often, when you get to apartment buildings like that, it is very regular, you also come to play as well, so, um, something that we'll, we'll explore during the site plan approval process.
Yes, so, uh, I think, uh, all these questions has come to mind, that, to discuss certain parts of the project, that we, um, honestly, uh, knowing which parts come at which time, so, they're good questions for sure. Any questions from, uh, members of the public tonight? That's all right.
We just have a comment, Mayor.
Yes.
We just really appreciate it's, uh, really well-planned subdivision, so, I've seen a few of these in my lifetime, and I really like the fluidness, and I like the mixture of houses, and I really appreciate you looking at Iroquois as your next destination, so I think it offers our community the much-needed housing that we're looking for, not only seniors, but, you know, young families as well, so, really well done, in my opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay. That's it, so thank you for, uh, Valcraft Homes, uh, Mervantown, thank you for having us on the Mervantown coming tonight, uh, appreciate your turn, uh, I'm sure you'll get called upon throughout the process, and then, I think, you, Miss Moore, for your presentation tonight. Um, so, but now, on the public meeting on the planned subdivision, Valcraft Homes, and the zoning bylaw amendment discussion, we'll keep the public meeting open to discuss the Glenn Becker assessment. Okay. Uh, and I guess, I believe I can return for this piece. Thank you, uh, Councilman. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, seven to eight, Glenn Becker assessment update, and I'll call on, uh, Superintendent, uh, who joins, uh, Crystal St. Thomas.
Good evening, everybody, for you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, this is the meeting to consider, uh, for a section seventy-six. consider, uh, for section seventy-six, which is an update of the assessment schedule for the Glenbecker Municipal Drain, um, if you remember last council meeting, Monica Shade from the Shade Group was here to present the, the full report, this is just, um, a revision of the report, there was a small mistake that was found in it, uh, has been corrected, and, uh, we're hoping at the end of this evening, we can have the two readings of bylaw.
Okay? Yes, click with one.
Mayor Broad, so, um, the, uh, sorry, the presentation attached is essentially identical to the one that Monica presented last week, except for a small revision to the Glenbecker, so, um, I don't know if we need to go through the report, we can if, uh, council wishes to, but it's really just formality that we're, we're looking to bring it back.
There was one property that was missed in one of the assessment schedules, so the revision was one line item on the whole report.
Okay, so we added one line item to the report, I think that's fine, any questions? Okay? Okay, so at the end, we're, we get on the, uh, update to the Glenbecker Assessment, so at this time, at, uh, on a motion that the public meeting decided we're, we close at six fifty-four P.M., moved by Councilor Ward, seconded by Councilor Vino, are in favor? Carry. Thank you, uh, Mr. St. Thomas. Okay, we move on to action requests. So the first one is eight A, uh, FES twenty-two-four-iron SCBA purchase, from Service Director, uh, from Chief Albert Hughes.
Thank you through you, Mayor Broad, um, this is a request for, uh, to move forward with the purchase of the SCBA as, uh, we, uh, procured, uh, did the year of payment for, uh, last fall, and it's procured through the budget line in January.
Great, any questions, comments tonight? Councilor one?
Yes, thanks, I think through you, Mayor, this might be more directed towards finance, um, so, hi Julie, um, so I'm just wondering, do the masks, are they in our asset management plan, just out of curiosity, because they are quite expensive to replace, I'm just wondering if that's an asset under the fire line that we, we, well?
It should be an item, one item in the asset management plan, um, right now, it's recent, I'm not sure.
Okay.
That is still something that our asset management coordinator is confiding all the information, um, but it, it is something that should be in that, for the, for the asset management.
And then, can I follow up?
Yes.
So then that, just so I can wrap my head around this, so if it were, once it is contained in the asset management plan, that would then instruct how much money we were to put into the reserve to replace that asset at the end of its life, correct?
Right.
Okay, okay. I think my, my question stems from, I guess, if the SCBA masks were never in the asset management, we didn't have an asset management plan before, we would not have understood when or how they should be replaced, so, so hopefully, when this purchase comes through, it gets added, and then, it's future councils have that, so they know.
Exactly, we'll have to move in with, uh, the fire, um, emergency service department, and have all the assets put in there, find the other name, it is due to be replaced, and then we'll determine what, uh, needs to be in reserve.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so then, I have a motion by Councilor Prue's report, FES twenty-two-four-iron for the procurement of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, from twelve hundred degrees for South Dundas Fire Emergency Service, in amount of three hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and forty-four, fifty-four cents, and that the acting director of Fire Emergency Service authorized signed that purchase documents with twelve hundred degrees in the purchase, moved by Deputy Mayor St. Pierre, seconded by Councilor Vino, are in favor? Carry. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Prue. Okay, I'm going to, uh, B, C S twenty-two-four-iron, twenty-two-four grants and donation requests, click with one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Broad, and through you, um, council would have gone through the exercise in January, um, during budget deliberations, where the, um, where council reviewed, uh, the many requests received by community groups and organizations, uh, whether, was, whether it was for monetary, uh, grant donation or in-kind request, um, so the schedule attached is the recommended, uh, amount that council directed staff to come back with, so the total amount approved for grants, uh, sorry, I should say, the total monetary amount approved for grants and donation, uh, was thirty-one thousand seven hundred going directly to, uh, directly to the groups, um, leaving, uh, approximately three thousand three hundred dollars, uh, in the reserve for requests that may be received throughout the year, um, the purpose of the, of the report is to get a little bit of, um, one thing, I guess, we, we, uh, skipped over during the budget process was the in-kind requests, so, once staff had, had a, an opportunity to go through them, uh, there were a few requests in the in-kind requests, um, that don't necessarily fall under the in-kind, um, request, um, definition, so you'll see a pattern here, um, obviously, a lot of these groups, we know that insurance is a struggle for a lot of them, um, and we've been advised, um, from our insurance company, although, if we're not the event organizers, you know, we can't add it to our insurance, um, our municipal policy, um, so it will be up to those event organizers to get a special events policy for their, for their specific events, um, and there's a number of, uh, reasons why the insurance companies are asking us to do that, um, and it's one, two, because of liability with some of these events, um, but also for the, the event organizers, they, they can be held personally liable if anything were to happen during, during these events, so it is important that they are insured properly, so that they're not held liable personally, so you can see here, we're not recommending, um, you know, holding the policies for, um, some of these, uh, organizations, um, and some of the other requests are, like, um, from, to be specifically, um, you know, porta-potties and security, um, that falls outside the scope of an in-kind donation, because there's some expense to that, um, but I, I do want to mention that, um, we are meeting with, uh, our insurance provider tomorrow, um, and one of the topics that, uh, we've, we've asked them to come prepared with is, you know, how do we help our residents get through the hurdle of insurance, because we know that it's, it's an industry people aren't familiar with, and they don't know where to start, um, so in the preliminary discussions with our insurer, um, they're willing to work with us on a program of some sort, where we can direct our, uh, community organizations directly to the insurance companies, where they can assist them getting these policies that are required, um, to have some of these events, um, so, the ask, I guess, tonight is just that, um, that council approves the, the, the schedule that we went through in June, in that, um, the in-kind requests are approved other than ones, other than the ones that are noted in, in the report. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, uh, click with one, uh, aside from that, I would, uh, I would think that we'll continue to be a helpful, uh, groups to attain the insurance, I think that's probably, uh, the future request would be, uh, the help on that, to, we don't, we want to eliminate, uh, as many of those, uh, administrative, uh, pieces for, for volunteers to hold in the back, right, so, making sure that we help them, uh, attain that, so it's a benefit for us too, because they're, they're, they have that insurance, and it's on municipal property, so, I can, I want us to be a helpful hand in that, and not, uh, not, not, uh, some days, some days, companies, things, uh, I understand that they fall out of, kind of, out of our scope, but Councilor one?
Oh, yes, thank, thank you, Mayor, so, I'm looking at, you know, we're removing the in-kind, like, insurance, I understand it's not in-kind, so that's fine, but have we told these groups, and then have they figured out what that cost will be, because I'm a bit concerned, like, some of these committees, they'll probably need help covering that insurance, um, and I know we have that reserve, so I just want to make sure they understand they have the opportunity to come back to the reserve to maybe pull from that, I, I think a lot of these smaller events, like, they're on our township property, so I agree, I think it's really beneficial that we help them through that process, but I also think that, you know, if we have to cover some of the money associated with that through a, a donation, and then they use that money to purchase their own insurance, is just as helpful towards us, because, like you said, Mayor, if they have their own insurance, then we're less likely to also be sued, so, um, I, I just want to make sure that that's clear to the event organizers, that, you know, it isn't an in-kind, but you can come back with a request for that additional, whatever that charge may be, I don't know, so.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mayor Broad, um, so I have been in, um, communication with most of the, of the groups, with, um, Director Janson as well, we've kind of tackled it as a team, um, and the message is always, we're gonna help you, uh, procure, and, uh, to work with them to get the insurance, so, if the direction of councils, if, um, just so I'm clear, you know, if some of these groups, uh, that are indicated in this report that, you know, we're not supporting the in-kind for insurance, but they come back to council requesting for the funds to cover their insurance, we're okay with that.
That would be my, that's what I was hoping for, yeah, that's the rest of council's, so.
That's my answer, right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Broad, um, yeah, I'm glad to hear that the insurance companies are coming in, and we're not the only, uh, municipality that's struggling with this, I was just actually reading an article, uh, I don't know if it's a larger municipality, but City of Ottawa is going through the same thing about community partnership, uh, partners' insurance for these type of events that's being held, uh, kind of a two-tiered level insurance, so, I, I think we should, uh, really research, uh, through our insurance companies, and, and, listen, I know it's, 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 insurance is about insurance, but there, to me, there's sometimes not just a direct yes or no, there's somewhere in between that we can help these community groups out, and, again, maybe it's covering the cost or, or whatnot, but we should really dive into that a little bit more, um, and I would, uh, recommend maybe, maybe even reaching out, and the articles are on the paper, I don't mind sending them to you, maybe reaching out to other community or municipalities, and finding out what they're kind of doing for the, this type of, uh, insurance request as well, so.
Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor Broad, so I was just, before we just agreed that we're limited to offer donations to cover insurance, do we know exactly how much it's going to be? Should we set an offset limit, or should we just?
I think the, uh, Councilor Ward is proposing they'll come back with an actual-
Well, they're gonna come back with a full figure.
With an actual figure, if it's five hundred thousand, ten thousand, they'll get to decide that way.
Yeah, I, I don't want to say yes.
No, of course, no, it's maybe the type of, maybe come back and ask us, yeah.
And through you, Mayor Broad, we do have a little bit of history on potential costs of, um, like, from previous years, where we can, for instance, um, um, the, the event down by the river, um, you know, we knew what it was last year, so we could prepare this year, but a lot, if the events are out from a hundred and twenty days, we won't double get to it, so that's kind of the struggle a little bit, with, like, predicting the whole year ahead, but I think it's a good, uh, recommendation that you're making that, you know, if these do come up, we're not gonna disregard them, we're gonna, we're giving the opportunities to the council, and, uh, see if they can get, get help that way.
Okay. Motion to Councilor Prue of Report, CS twenty-two-four-iron, accept the twenty-two-four grants and donation requests in amount of thirty-five thousand, and feel the amount of in-kind requests be approved as recommended by staff, moved by Councilor Ward, seconded by Councilor Vino, are in favor? Carry, thank you. Okay, um, eighth E, PF twenty-two-four-three Arena Project Funding, Director of Parks, Recreation Office, this is David Jensen.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, so in front of you is a little bit of, uh, kind of a housekeeping report here, we had some discussion on January tenth with regards to, uh, the arena grant applications, uh, we are gonna go through with two of them, uh, so I'm just hoping to use, uh, this motion and this action report, uh, basically, in the grant applications, they ask us to show where we're gonna get the unsecured funding from, so this resolution will end up being me proving where I'm gonna get the unsecured funding from, so, if you have any questions, I'd have to answer them, but we've, in a way, I've discussed.
Yes. Any questions on this one? Well, thank you, Director Jensen, motion, Councilor Prue of Report, PF twenty-two-four-three, the S P A S for funding remaining of the arena entrance project funding, provided the municipality is successful securing project funding from, from, or, or, to, to, in fund, moved by Councilor Vino, seconded by Deputy Mayor St. Pierre, are in favor? Carry. Thank you. Briefly, uh, delegation at, uh, Roma will also help us in that area of funding for the project. Okay, um, eighth D, PE twenty-two-four-iron, Development Charges Background Study, uh, Planner, Ms. Moore.
Thanks. Um, so, we've, I know we've discussed this a few times before, um, but, uh, council allocated funds in the twenty-twenty-four budget for development charges study, um, specifically, the Development Charges Act authorizes municipalities to pass bylaws, um, to impose development charges against land to recover the increased capital costs required because of the increased needs for services arising from development, so, um, what this report, uh, aims to do is to get direction and to issue a request for proposal, um, to get the background study that is required, um, complete.
I just want to clarify, a background study is required as step one in the process?
That is correct, we've got a process in front of you, and, um, again, that's all laid out, so there will be plenty of opportunity for the public, council staff to comment through the process, um, but, uh, it is, uh, sort of strictly laid out in the Development Charges Act, um, so, uh, the long-term financial sustainability of the municipality, um, would, is, the impact of this, um, would have long-term financial sustainability.
In your, in your experience and your guess, how long would this process take?
Um, I would anticipate, um, hopefully, public consultation, uh, early fall, and then possible, like, with implementation in twenty-twenty-five.
Questions? Okay, that's, that's one.
I just, I want to say thank you, like, this is something that I very much wanted to see in front of council, and, um, looking forward to, to the process and seeing, uh, what we have, I think Councilor Smith had concerns in a public meeting about, you know, funding for fire and whatnot, and this is the perfect opportunity to also look at, at that long-term expense, so, I think it fits in nicely with where we're going with development in, in South Dundas, so, looking forward to, to getting started on the process, thanks.
Good, very good. Okay, I motion to Councilor Prue of Report, PE twenty-two-three-iron, and ask the staff to repair and issue a request for proposal for development charge study, moved by Deputy Mayor St. Pierre, seconded by Councilor Ward, are in favor? Carry. Okay, eighth E, PF twenty-two-four-oh-four, Dupont Provincial Park Trails, Director Janson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so in front of you guys tonight is a report, it's a follow-up to the delegation that council received from the Morseburg Lions on December eleventh, uh, much like, uh, Ms. Moran, this is very much the first step in, uh, what will probably end up being a long process, um, but, uh, in the report, you'll see, I did include some information in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, uh, outdoor trails is definitely a want of the residents of South Dundas, um, in that, uh, master plan, you'll see, there was almost nobody who didn't want it, and it was definitely the, the most wanted recreational activity of the residents, um, if you remember back to the delegation, there were many things that were wants within that, uh, delegation from the Lions, um, some of the services we could help with, some of them we can't, so I did reach out to the counties and SNC, uh, so South Nation Conservation is interested in becoming a partner with us, uh, they would like to keep us in as a partner, obviously, so it'd be, and that, so this is just us getting in front of it, so I'm just pleased for council support and principle, uh, in the nine here in the report, you'll see some of the items that I think, uh, we can come in and support with, um, obviously, that, get nailed down in the terms of reference later on between all three parties, uh, but we want to make sure that we're entering into something that council's on board with, and before we go, setting up the terms of reference, that council, in principle, is on board with everything, uh, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Director Janson. Comment for myself, certainly, when we met with, uh, MPP or PA, uh, Assistant Laura Smith, and we talked about parks, and things going on, uh, on to the east of us, this town's end is provincial parks, right, and getting to open those lines of communication, and having parkland available, and being used is, uh, is certainly something that we talked about in that delegation, so, any comments, uh, tonight? Councilor Ward?
Just a really quick comment. And I, I think it's a great idea, and I agree that, you know, trail management is not our forte, and I'm glad to see SNC has come to the table, my concern stems from, and, and no offense to anyone, but it comes from SNC's ability to maintain the trails that already exist in South Dundas, and we've gotten quite a bit of feedback as a council on that, so- um, my, my only thought would be maybe we start with, you know, just having a summer, spring, and fall, and then if it's really popular, look at winter, 'cause winter has a little bit of extra liability, I'm assuming, with snow and ice and...
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I won't clarify, I think, uh, that trails there should probably stay parking lot, I was trying to sort of meet the...
Oh, okay, just the parking lot, okay, no.
The service I'm aiming for, we currently do it at Two Creeks, so it would just be...
The same thing, okay, perfect, no, that's, that's fine, thank you.
Now, I just noticed Two Creeks, so just, publicly, that's the trails we're working against, I would do, Council Ward, on point, uh, certainly, but we, uh, Counselor Smith, he's a member of, uh, that organization, so continuing to do your work at that table would be appreciated on all our behalfs, for sure, further comments, Counselor?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Brad, um, I, I know that there was some, uh, some people from Evonik that were in communication with us on this project, and I just wondered if we could maybe just get some comment on that, and as well, I just wondered, has, has anybody asked Evonik if they would be interested in perhaps partnering with, up in this somehow, because it directly affects them, just, just...
Same as, same as.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, I spoke to Cat Hunter, who works at Evonik in Health and Safety, the concern with Evonik was whether there was access to the two pieces of property in the back with the old rail line, I mentioned to her that we were doing a presentation tonight, that Director Janson was doing a presentation, that after they looked it over, they can provide comment to us if they have concerns, and so they, and I gave her my contact information, and the lines of communication are open.
All right. Excellent, any more? Okay, and motion to Council support the principle of foundational partnership between the Southern Asian Conservation, the Marshall District Lions, and the municipality of South Dundas to pursue the creation of a trail on Dupont Provincial Park, that's the part is on one in this report, PF 22404, it will be in draft in the terms of reference between operators for future approval, moved by Council Ward, seconded by Deputy Mr. St. Pierre, on favor, carried. Okay, uh, FS 224, South Dundas Community Fund, Clerk Lebron.
Uh, and through you to council, this report, um, was added to the agenda, um, as an amendment, so, uh, last week, it was brought to our attention, um, through our request to release funds to, uh, the South Branch, um, sorry, the Matilda Memorial Recreation Committee, so as you may recall, last year, um, in 2023, there were two intakes for the South Branch Community Fund, um, one was approved in, um, August, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, the second intake was then, um, issued in September, and that was also approved by council, uh, for fifty-seven thousand, uh, both the applications were from the, um, Matilda Memorial Recreation, uh, Committee, due to an oversight, uh, from staff, we over-allocated funds to the Mati, uh, the Matilda Group, um, uh, as the first intake was not recorded, um, and that those pending funds were actually there when we advised them they were, so, um, in order to resolve, um, this issue that came to our attention, we're looking, uh, for council's direction on our next steps, uh, what staff are recommending are, um, that we, um, the balance, oh, sorry, I'm just gonna refer to my report here, so I get the numbers right, um, so, if I back up, none of the funds for the first intake were, um, distributed, uh, but the second intake was, um, was paid in full, so, there's a balance of forty-six thousand, uh, that will need to be submitted, um, to the contractors who have already start, began the work, so, what we're asking council is, um, and as the resolution reads, that we're looking to approve that fifty-three thousand amount, um, which would mean that that reserve fund would go into a deficit for, uh, 2024 in the amount of fifteen thousand, um, and then, once the funds are replenished by the, uh, the Wind Farm Fund, um, then in 2025, we'll be able to, to start another intake of, uh, applications, so, uh, just to clarify, we would, we're asking if there would be no, uh, South Branch Community Fund intake this year until the funds are replenished, and, uh, we'll have to answer any questions.
Clerk Lebron, uh, unfortunately, I understand that we've, uh, pre-approved some from others that we will be receiving, uh, Council Ward, is you on the committee, any concerns, uh, do you need to share your comments at this point?
Yes, I think the only concern I have, Mayor, and I've talked to staff about this, is that the MMRC is the primary, um, recipient of most of the funds, however, um, when we did the, uh, the donations and requests, the idea was to take the, that they were going to apply to the South Branch Fund for those funds that they were looking for, for their events, so now, of course, if the, we're in a deficit, uh, my only concern is, is they really don't have a place to turn to for that funding, so, um, perhaps we encourage them to reapply to the, that we just talked about might be limited because of insurance, but, um...
It could be an opportunity to...
It could be an opportunity to apply for them again after we did that, so, I just wanna make it clear that that was the intention, is that they would go through that fund for, like, the pig roast and some of the other items that they do that are all free to the communities, so, um, that's the only hesitation we have, but I, I think the option staff is presented is the best one going forward, especially if those commitments have been made, the one item I would ask, is that if those commitments have been made, perhaps we should see those commitments, 'cause if they're not actually, and I'm not questioning anybody saying that they're not, it's just, historically, we've, as part of that committee, done it piecemeal, kind of, so we hire one contractor, pay that contractor, and then hire another contractor and pay that contractor, so, um, might be a good opportunity for them to come back to council and kind of...
Give us an update.
Give us an update on where they are and, and what they've done, I, I think, as part of that as well, so, that would be my own, only comment.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, so, I did have a question on this, so, we got this late, so I didn't have the time to read it through a couple of times, this is gonna be kind of an unrelated question, this is gonna be for Treasurer Stewart, could you, I, it says in here, there's about the adjustment for CPI from the money that's deposited, and I just, if, if you know exactly, 'cause I was trying to read it, it's kind of, it's difficult to understand, it's like, half of the CPI from December of the previous year, I was trying to, do you know exactly how that works?
Through you, Mayor Brad, actually, I was just reading it as well, and I don't know currently exactly what the calculation is, I know it's the thirty thousand, and then it is a portion of CPI, but to, I don't have an answer for you, I don't know how...
It's a difficult rate, yeah.
It's, it's not just CPI, like, most things, right, it's not just, uh, the, the general increase, so, no, unfortunately, I don't know, um, what the amount will be or how, how they're gonna calculate it.
Okay. For the Treasurer Stewart, any other comments? Okay, I have a motion, the Council, direct staff to proceed with the final remaining balance of the approval grant to the material Recreation Committee, allowing for the reserve fund to be in a deficit position of fifteen thousand until the funding replenished in the 2025 intake year, Counselor Smith, seconded by Council Ward, on favor, carried. For the Treasurer Stewart, any other comments? Okay, I have a motion, the Council, direct staff to proceed with the final remaining balance of the approval grant to the material Recreation Committee, allowing for the reserve fund to be in a deficit position of fifteen thousand until the funding replenished in the 2025 intake year, Counselor Smith, seconded by Council Ward, on favor, carried. Okay, uh, pass, nine A, 202407, Budget, Treasurer Stewart.
Through you, Mayor Brad, uh, in January, staff presented the 2024, um, operating budget, um, through discussions, uh, there were some changes that council requested made on the budget, so from there, uh, the overall annual net tax levy that, um, resulted from the changes amounted to just over eight-point-eight million, which meant an increase, um, to the net tax levy of seven-point-five-five percent, uh, this also resulted in a change to, uh, the residential tax rate from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four, uh, of a six-point-six-seven percent increase, and that is just on the, for the lower tier itself, um, which means, on residential assessment of two-hundred-eleven-thousand-one-forty-eight, uh, approximate increase will be seventy-nine dollars and three cents, um, and I guess just one other thing to note that isn't on here, uh, the overall increase, when you include the, uh, upper-tier education, is a four-point-eight-three percent increase over the previous year, and again, if you use the residential tax assessment of two-hundred-eleven-thousand-one-forty-eight, uh, it means an increase of a hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and twenty-six cents overall.
All right, very good, thank you, for your suit, questions, comments, Counselor Ward?
So, I just, just for members listening, and, and just for my own understanding, the four-point-eight...
Three.
Four-point-eight-three is what is hitting the tax rate specifically?
That's right.
With the upper-tier and...
Lower-tier, upper-tier in education.
So that is the increase that they will see, not the seven-point-five-five?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Seven, actually.
Six, yes, sorry, six-point-six-seven, yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we're about 202407, they're about to set the 2024 operating capital budgets for municipal... Uh, of, of, so, Dundas, we're having passed an open council, sorry, I should have 202402, no, 07 is right, okay, sorry, 07, sorry, I was at that, 07, uh, over, uh, the Counselor Smith, seconded by Deputy Mayor, thank you. All right, sorry, but I got, uh, I was reading 202411, so I'm sorry, I'm trying to break, so pardon, just for it.
Right.
Okay, um, eight, nine C, 202412, River Matilda's Glenn Becker and Vin Marshall Jane, Chris A. Thomas.
Good evening, everybody, through you, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, just the bylaw, two, this is the readings of bylaw to accept the revised report as...
Okay, any questions, comments, I've been reading this a couple of times there, uh, the bylaw 202411, being a bylaw to improve special annual drainage rates upon land in respect to which money is borrowed under the Title Drains Act, be ready to pass it up from council, signed and sealed.
Sorry.
You just forgot to do the...
Yeah, okay, so, so go ahead and do that, we forgot, we forgot the, but go ahead and do that, Mayor Brad, just finish that up.
Your reading...
All right, sorry with that.
So, nine...
The Council, on the second, they run out of bylaws, therefore, 12 being a provision by law to adopt section seventy-six, and just report on the title strength, Glenn Becker, Jane, and Vin Marshall, that makes a lot more sense now, moved by the Council, seconded by Counselor Ward, on favor, glad to be, oh, you guys are paying close attention, uh, nine C, 202411, running by law, we're, we're, by law, by... Any coffee?
Thank you, Mayor Brad, uh, so, the report, uh, the bylaw that we use simply to, um, improve the special, uh, drainage rates, um, this title drove, uh, sorry, this title drainage loan application came to council on August thirteenth of last year, um, so this bylaw is to, uh, to impose the, the drainage rates, um, for this particular application.
Any comments or questions? All right, I have a motion for nine B, 202411, being a bylaw to improve special annual drainage rates upon land in respect to which money is borrowed on the drainage act, be ready to pass it up in council, signed and sealed, moved by Council Ward, seconded by Counselor Smith, thank you, all in favor, thank you. Nine B, 202413, HGC Management Inquinquercycling Processing Grant, Director Manager, Harland.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so in front of you, um, you'll find our, uh, recommendation for our recycling process, uh, so during the committee panel meeting, which was held at a regular council meeting on January tenth, uh, the discussion of waste slash recycling options and considerations were discussed, uh, during that, during the council meeting held on January twenty-sixth, a resolution was passed indicating that the municipality wishes to enter into an agreement with HGC Waste Management for the processing of our blue box, blue box recyclables at the, uh, contractor's core wall facility effective March first, uh, 2024, so, the blue box and the green box recycling will be transported to HGC Management, a processing facility at the processing rate of one hundred dollars per metric ton, commencing on March first, the payment will be made monthly to HGC recyclables, where HGC will then retain any revenue from the sale of recycle, recycling materials. I will emphasize again that as of January first, 2025, that we are known that the municipality is no longer in the recycling game, so this is just for the duration of March first to December thirty-first of 2024, I can answer any questions which you may have at this time.
Questions, comments, seeing none, bylaw 202413, we are bylaw to execute blue box process services with HESC management, be ready to pass it up in council, signed and sealed, moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Ward, all in favor, carried, thank you. Thank you, General. Okay, boards and committees, ten B, Council Ward, by, I, a, a date from February sixth.
Yeah, so that was our first meeting, uh, post-budget, and so that was, uh, one of our more, um, harder topics that night, was, uh, look at what we're gonna do, um, going forward for the rest of the year with the budget allocated, um, there has been some personnel turnover there, and so some of the, uh, financials and that are a little bit muddy right now, so one of the takeaways from that meeting is that staff and, uh, and, uh, the chair of DIA are gonna be working together to kind of clean up all the, the financials, uh, see what happens to, actually, that night, and, uh, it's worth noting that, um, at this time, the DIA is kind of in the midst of a, uh, potential restructuring or re, uh, realigning, um, maybe going down a potential different direction, there's gonna be more discussions had with staff and council forthcoming on that, a lot of budget, we did not set a budget date yet because we're waiting for these financials to get cleaned up, and, uh, so that we can have a pre-budget meeting, it's probably looking like something like April, I think, uh, it's typically February, but it's looking more like April, um, once we get these, these issues tidied up, so, that's got, I don't know if I forgot anything from that, yeah, correct.
Very good, any questions for Counselor Reno? All right, seeing none, uh, ten C, Iroquois Business Groups, so, I see all males, Director Janson on himself attended the Iroquois Business Group, uh, um, last week, uh, just reviewed the financials and, um, went over their wish list and, uh, looked at all the activities they're getting organized for, for 2024, they're gonna announce their annual Friday and pamphlet of their daily, weekly, monthly events, uh, Director Janson was there just to follow up on, uh, some of the, the requests and some of the things that's in our budget, uh, Piny of the Bouries, uh, talked a little bit about some of the potential, uh, changes at the street level, um, installation of a quail at the Christmas market, all the, all the other things, uh, talked about a couple of defects in the street light that's out that, uh, just added to the list, um, et cetera, um, and then they're looking forward, their big project to finish off, um, is the, um, Pavilion that they've saved money for, that we have a dollar match for, and then, uh, their next project is the, uh, once that's done, uh, the Tourism Information Board, they're gonna start working on, and then their future project is the Plaza, Plaza Sign, so they have a longer-term, uh, plan set out, uh, in phases that they're, they're working on, anything you'd like to add, Director Janson, from the meeting, I think we're good, okay? Um, otherwise, last night, we had, uh, Economic and Development Meeting, uh, really, really good meeting, excellent meeting, so, uh, welcome, uh, Tia Fraser to our, to the team, as the communications active Tourism Officer, um, we had a delegation, um, Mr. Gilmore, Gilmore Pharmacy, uh, continued to talk doctor recruitment, uh, nurse practitioners, dentists, um, chiropractors, all that type of thing for the Iroquois area, and ideas for, for all of South Dundas, um, as well as... and ideas for all of South Dundas, as well as we appointed a new person, Ralph Rick, to the, to the committee. After, this is a new committee of council, as we combine, if you remember, the tourism and act of together. So we're doing a review of our terms of reference to see where we've been at for a year. And then we started planning, obviously more candidate-based celebration, pop-up shops, we talked, and then obviously the business awards for the fall, we started to talk those type of things. And we're going to be looking at some volunteer appreciation, giving Tuesdays in the fall. We're going to start looking at how we can engage, A, with our current volunteers and recognize them, as well as potential future volunteers. So that's really on the tourism side, the act of side, we talked about what is our marketing plan, and then lobbying we can do, as well as some other small events we're considering to try and launch off. Anything to add, Deputy Ward? Like, that was all my notes on that? Okay. Consent agenda, which we're going to pull the one, which will be next, Counselor Smith. So the consent agenda, 8A budget variance for 2023, building statistics for January 2024, D, Economic Development Committee appointment, donation requests for the St. Cecilia Catholic Pancake Breakfast, annual product for the South Nation Authority Resolution, Republic Royal Transit CN, and more policy, social, economic review. So I have motion that our items under consent agenda be adopted as presented. Counselor Vino, seconded by Deputy Mayor St. Pierre, all in favor, carried. Some other discussion items? Like to just discuss the Crime Stoppers Hockey. Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Broad. So I think it's a great idea that we're having this tournament. So just for Director Janson, this, the date for this is, when is it? March, March 28th? So we would, like, this is, this would be, this is definitely off-season, so like, it would not be, it would fall outside of the times that the arena would be normally used by almost anybody else, correct? Like, that ice time would be sitting there, not unused for any other reason at that time of that tournament, correct?
So through you, Mayor Broad, to Counselor Smith, yes, that is typically, at this point, that is unused ice time.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that is a great event for the food share, as I continue to be looking for items, activities. Deputy Mayor?
No, I guess, I'm just looking at calendar, is this going to come to conflict with the end Figure Stadium event that happens? Do they not usually do that at the end of March?
So through you, Mayor Broad, this is the Thursday before the Good Friday. The figure skating show has been pushed to the, it's the week after Easter this year.
Oh, okay, perfect. Set up and all that, right? It's kind of more technical. So, okay, perfect, thank you.
So on that note, when do you expect to take the ice out? What's the expected date? That's on that topic.
To council, ice typically comes out two days after the ice show. Usually, we turn off the cold the night of the ice show, and it comes out two days after.
For pickleball.
Pickleball and bar hockey.
Absolutely.
Okay. Excellent, okay, that's, that's good, yes. Thank you, Counselor Smith, for highlighting that, that event, and maybe we can support in any way we can. Under 13, notices of motions, seeing none tonight, ratification by law, the ballot 22414, being a ballot to adopt, confirm, or ratify matters dealt with resolution, be read, passed in open council, signed and sealed. Counselor, Deputy Mayor, St. Pierre, Counselor Ward, thank you. All in favor? Carried. And the motion that council now adjourn to meet with the call of the chair, Counselor Vino, Deputy Mayor St. Pierre, all in favor, carried. So as we bring the meeting to a close for Wednesday, February 14th, on Valentine's Day, 2:00, and thank you for all those in attendance, thank you for staff, preparation for the meeting tonight, and to our guests, Valcraft and Novatek, and everyone involved. Thanks to all the community events that have been ongoing throughout the past few weeks. I know I attended a few, the Chaps Hockey Tournament, the two breakfasts, Sunday morning, the station five hours breakfast, and the Cecilia School here in the area, so lots of other events that have been ongoing. And thanks to, thanks to everybody in this municipality, and we're certainly proud to represent you, and apologize for a couple of the audio difficulties as we got started earlier tonight. So, that being said.